Promote the Milton Courier a little bit. Becky brought some scratch pads, notepads. Evidently, they're trying to clean out a building on Vernal Avenue. And so, there's a whole box of notepads that state Milton Courier on the bottom. So, go ahead and help yourself and put them to good use. So, thank you, Becky. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the agenda itself. Are there any changes?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Don and seconded by Diamond to accept the agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So, move. Next item is the action on the minutes. And we have two sets of minutes. One is for the February 11th regular meeting. And the second one is the February 21st special meeting. And those minutes are included in your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting held on February 11th, 2019, and the special meeting held on February 21st, 2019, as presented.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Diamond and seconded by Don to accept the minutes for both of the meetings. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? So, move. Next item is action on the vouchers. Mr. Pierce?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve vouchers totaling $352,764.
Second.
Okay. A motion was made by Mike and seconded by Karen to accept the vouchers as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, so move. Next item is public participation. And we have two. The first one is Shelley Kroll-Hanky. And she's going to be speaking on item 2A, which is referendum.
Hi. My name is Shelley Kroll-Hanky. I live at 2713 Pull-Ups Drive, Milton. I'm here tonight as a parent and resident of the Milton School District. I am requesting the full support of all board members for the April referendum. It is time for it to put the boards' focus back on the needs of the students, staff, and the community, and what is best for Milton. Too much time and energy is being wasted on personal agendas. District faculty needs have not changed in the last five, even 10 years, and the costs keep rising. We need this referendum to go forward for the community, for the students, and for the staff. Start prioritizing the needs of our kids so that we can move our district forward in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Mike Price, is also going to speak on the same agenda item, 2A, referendum.
It's going to have the same kind of message that Becky did. I first want to thank all of you for taking the time under busy schedules to be here tonight. I'm not here to see me to speak to you as president of the Friends of Milton Pool or as a parent of a high school junior. I'm here to speak to you tonight about what has been out of my heart over the last few weeks regarding this referendum. It is easy to say that this referendum has divided this community, neighbors, and friends, and possibly relatives. It has been said that the tongue is the smallest, most powerful weapon known to man. We can choose to use it for encouragement or use it to tear each other down. Unfortunately, mortal matter has occurred over this past year. We are quick to condemn and judge others for their mistakes rather than affording the opportunity to ask for forgiveness and then extend that to them. We've all made mistakes at some point in our lifetime. I hope we learn from them and come up with a better person. The negativity that has been displayed over the last few years has reflected upon us more. I too have gotten caught up in the rhetoric and thought this is not the image that I want to portray as a person. We are all better than this, as individuals and as a community. We are not living by the biblical instructions. We live to love one another and to selflessly put the needs of others ahead of our own. We need to get back to that quickly. When I chose to get involved in finding a solution to the challenges facing this district, I chose to do so in order to do what's best for this community and, more importantly, for our current and future students. Yes, my main interest began in trying to build a new economic center. But it's more than just that. It is about providing our teachers and students with the resources and facilities to thrive, to become well-rounded individuals. It's about putting our emotions, ego, and pride aside to collaboratively find solutions. This is not about winning or being right. It's about doing what's right for our students, just as people that came before you did. People who felt that your education and future was an important investment. I ask you reflect upon where you would be today if previous generations chose to protect their own self-interest and looked at you with dollar signs instead of who you can become as productive, well-rounded citizen of this community. If we continue to go on this current path of divisiveness, politics, and games of "I gotcha" and one-off friendship, nobody wins. Not you, not me, this community, and, most importantly, not our students. We must somehow get past it, divide, and value communication. Both sides have not had a good job of communicating with each other regarding this issue. I agree that all voices need to be heard, and we are better served by reaching out, sitting down, and discussing those concerns face-to-face, not on the various media platforms. I urge you, look at your own heart and ask if you are being the best version of who you were meant to be and how others want to do you. I believe that all of you are good people with good intentions. Let's take the time to know each other by a simple kind gesture such as inviting each other to coffee or lunch and work through those differences in the next few weeks. By doing so, we can provide a powerful lesson to our students and community on how we resolve conflicts with civility and still remain neighbors and friends and coworkers. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Those are the only two that were signed up. Moving on to the student council report.
Unfortunately, the ACT testing last week, we were unable to meet again. We were unable to meet again, so no current updates from the student council.
But at the high school, generally, last week, we had our winter spent league. Actually, it's fun for Special Olympics. They are quite successful this year, so we're very proud of them. We're proud of the ones who go forward from that. And this week is also a birthday week, so there's activities at the high school again this week to support the everyday students.
Okay. Very good. Any questions of the student reps? Thank you. Moving on to the legislative update. Mr. Verwing.
Okay. Well, I wanted to just go over a couple of things that the Blue Ribbon Commission came up with in their study group over the summer. Some things, the things I'm going to talk about are the things that we have discussed here as a board. So, I just wanted to tell you what the Blue Ribbon Commission has suggested that should be done for schools. One of the things we talked about was short-term borrowing here, why we always have to short-term borrow, which many school districts do. It's because of the way the state aid payment is formulated. And so, two suggestions of the Blue Ribbon Commission was that we should change the way we give state aid to the schools. One suggestion was every month, the school district get a payment from the state, which would put more of a burden on DPI sending out the aid. The other one makes more sense to me, and that is to fund four equal payments. 25% in four equal payments, which they haven't done. They've only given 23 in the first payment and then 27 later on. And so, it would prevent many districts from short-term borrowing. You might ask, well, why? Why hesitate? It makes sense. It's because, you see, if they pay that extra payment out early, the state loses in their general fund $1.4 million of interest. And in the first year, $2.8 million in the second year. So, the choice is, does the state lose the interest or should the school district borrow the money? So, that's something I expect as a bill to come up this fall. We had our first education committee meeting, introductory meeting, last week. And I suspect that this will come up in the form of legislation. So, I hope that, for our sake, for our district's sake, that we don't have to short-term borrow, and they will change the way we give state aids. Also, one of the Blue Ribbon Commission's suggestions was that we need to fund special education more. Right now, special education is mandated, but the state only funds it 24.5%. And in the different options that they've given, the suggestion should be we should at least fund it 50 to 60%. And that would relieve a lot of pressure on the school districts who have a lot of special ed students. So, I suspect something will come up in that. I suspect you hear Governor Evers' call for millions of dollars more in special ed funding in his budget address on Thursday night. At least, that's the sense I got when I met with him last week, that he's going to fund special education more. So, that'd be something that we can look forward to. Another one of the recommendations is that we fund schools, go back to the 2/3 funding. We haven't reached that level since Governor Thompson was governor. And suggestion is that we go back to that, not necessarily through the aid, but that the schools get funded 2/3, money from the general fund, so that we relieve local property taxes. So, that's something that was recommended there. Another recommendation was if you have a lot of low-income students, that those low-income students should be funded at 1.2%, not 1% as a student, so that districts with low-income students who usually need more services would get more money through that funding. So, that's something I expect that we're going to be discussing as well. Another recommendation is that we're seeing a trend toward more 4K students across Wisconsin and across the United States. One state that you wouldn't think would have, has done a pilot program in 4K for 10 years, and that's the state of Alabama. And they have found out that by having poor kids in school sooner, that they spend a lot less money on the back end after they graduated by getting them more services when they're younger. And so, one of the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission was we only fund 4K students, a half a person, that we would fund it fully as a person, full-time raise to 1% if the students went at least 437 hours during the school year. So, those are some things that I think you might see come forward this year. Now, I also wanted to share with you, since we don't have a long agenda tonight, the bills in education that come up in one week over my desk. Now, this last week, I think I identified nine bills that came to my attention this week. So, let me just share a short capsule of them so you know some of the things that we're going to be talking about. Do you know in the state that some judges, some local judges, have put GPS monitoring on kids that were truant? And some feel that's a violation of their rights. And so, one of the bills would prohibit GPS monitoring for intruency cases. Another bill, Bill 1609, deals with students' confidential records. We all know students' records are confidential, but school boards can disclose certain information that is known as directory data. And the bill wants to add the parent's or guardian's name to that data that can be released. So, I suspect that that might be coming forward. Another bill, 1258, the state report card should include the percentage of students who are participating in music, dance, drama, and visual arts. That research shows that those programs help enhance learning and that schools, that people should be able to see how many people participate in those programs. So, that's, it's a minor change. It wouldn't affect the evaluation on the school's report card, but it's something that they felt that people want to know because arts enhance the learning. Another bill, 1584, the youth apprentice program. Currently, in the youth apprentice program, we identify 11 career clusters at the Department of Workforce Development. Sanctions, 11 career clusters. This bill would add five more areas to these clusters. Business management, education training, government and public administration, human services, law, public safety, corrections, and security. And give schools more money to help sanction those career paths. Another bill, 1459, this surprised me. The number of homeless students in Wisconsin identified in 2017 were 2,283 homeless students in Wisconsin. This bill would allow 17-year-olds to control their own admission into shelter facilities or transitional living programs at the age of 17 because they have no guardians or they have no parents, to get them some assistance. So, that's a bill that will probably come forward since it's becoming a larger problem. Another bill that's coming forward deals with the youth apprentice program and appropriation. In 2018, 4,229 students worked in Wisconsin. High school students worked in Wisconsin for 3,027 employers. This bill would update the youth apprentice funding to reflect demands. Now, the Department of Workforce Development gives schools $900 per youth apprentice. But we're finding oftentimes for schools, that's not enough to get them out looking for employees. So, this bill, and I don't think it's enough. And if it comes before us, I would like to amend it because it only raises from $900 to $1,000 per student, which I don't think is enough either. So, we'll have to look at what the school's actual costs are. So, this could be amended. But at least we're thinking, at least to fund the schools who are getting these kids out into the workforce before they graduate. And this is my last one, so thank you for bearing with me. But I thought this is just what comes across my desk in a week right now for bills. And some of them I'm a co-sponsor with. This bill, 1250, allows schools to employ temporary barricade devices during active shooting drills and if there's an active shooter in the building. In other words, you could have a device like to close off a hallway during active shooter drill if there's an active shooter, that you can only open from the inside. And so, there's a school district that requested this, so it's out of a suburban school in Milwaukee. And so, this is a piece of legislation that would come up. It has to be, actually, parents have to know that this thing, that this device exists. So, that'd be interesting. I don't know if it'll ever get out of committee. But those are some things that come across my desk. So, Don, thank you for all the time.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Verwing? Okay. Thank you. First report is a report, certain updates on the referendum and pool.
All right. We'll start with Mr. Schantz and the pool update.
All right. With the pool update, we are going to be reviewing with Ray Baker and associates some 50% complete drawings of the proposed pool improvements this week. And next week, we should be able to get some updated costs on what those improvements would be at that point. Also, this week is the last week that the pool will be open as it is right now. We're scheduled to drain the pool on Monday and Tuesday of next week. And with that process being done, we would then be moving into preparing the pool space itself for the asbestos statement that will take place over spring break. And one question that's come to me quite frequently over the last couple of weeks is, well, what are you doing with all the pictures and all that stuff that's on the wall? And how can you memorialize that? So, we actually contracted with Signorama, who is gonna, who came in. They scanned all the pictures that are on those walls, and they're going to be put together in a collage and memorialized on, we're bouncing around between some PVC board or some composite aluminum board that would be able to stand up in that existing pool area when it's completed. So, all the pictures will remain just in a different form. So, and the last bit of exciting news is that we got the ship date for the pool air handler, and it will be leaving the factory on June 9th. So, that's all for now.
So, with that June 9th date, is that still looking at getting us at the completion date that we initially stated?
As of right now, we're still on track for hopefully opening back up the last part of August.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Schantz on the pool? Thank you. Moving to the referendum.
All right. Referendum, as you know, tomorrow night, 6:00 to 7:00, we're having a community open house forum down at Harmony Elementary School. And that evening, tomorrow evening, we will have a brief, brief presentation, overview of the referendum components. There'll be members from each of the buildings and staff there to answer questions as well. We will have Lisa Voison from Baird, as well as PRA and JP Cullen to go over and answer questions. We will use the website as our main communication piece electronically. We're not going to have a special presentation as everything is on the website. But in essence, it'll be a few minutes of an overview and then allowing people to interact with whichever building or department or facet that they wish to. So, again, very informal, but a plenty of experts there and plenty of staff there to answer questions for community members. And it's tomorrow from 6:00 to 7:00 at Harmony.
Okay. That's the first of two that are planned.
Correct.
And are there others planned other than the second?
Well, we're looking at other potential groups to visit as well as what other communications are needed. And so, as part of our communication engagement team that we meet every week to go through, administrators and staff members to talk through what's needed. And of course, as board members have ideas, et cetera, please let us know because we'd like to make sure that we are addressing the concerns and the questions that community members have. We will keep a frequently asked question updated as well. And so, again, there's a lot of resources on the website, but our first of two open house engagement forums will begin tomorrow.
Okay. Any other questions concerning the referendum update? Thank you. Moving on to policy committee reports. Mr. Martin.
Yeah. Prior to this meeting, our policy committee met. And in our ongoing effort to keep our policies updated, we went through two different groups of our policies. The administrative team goes through and vets those and adds the updates recommended by Neola, our advisory group there in the policy world. So, we will propose for a first reading, policy numbers 1460, 3160, and 4160. In addition, policy numbers 4440, 6330, 6830, 8310, and 8605. So, we'll call this the first reading on those policy updates and amendments. And we'll have a subsequent review of those and a second reading and hopefully adoption at some point down the road here. And then, as I mentioned, we did a first reading on, and tonight will constitute the second reading. And at the end of my list, I will recommend adoption of the following policies. Bear with me, it's a little bit longer list, and I'm certainly not going to read the policy by name or description. I'm going to read the numbers for brevity. Policy numbers 2260, 3120, 3122, 3139, 3230, 4122, 4230, 5200, 5421, 5512, 5515, 5530, 5772, 5870, 6520, 6700, 7217, 7440, 8146, 8320, 8320.01, 8340, 8407, 8760, 9130, and 9160 have been previously reviewed. And I would move to adopt those as reviewed and amended.
I'll second that. Okay. We have a motion by Joe and a second by Mike to adopt the Neola policies for their second reading. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, so move. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Discussion and possible action on the 2019-20 Boys Hockey and Girls Gymnastics Co-op Program. Mr. Hamel.
Okay. I read up here some current athlete meetings, but I didn't realize that Don was on the agenda. I've been working with him for 25 years, but he only had 15 after minutes. So, thank you, Don, for that. Catch my breath. Okay. Well, too bad you missed it. That was a good one. So, I've got the two co-op programs that we are the hosts of Boys Hockey with Fort Atkinson, Gymnastics with Edgerton. Both programs are kind of at a new position here where we have been in Division 1. And in hockey, they're going, well, hockey only has one division, so they're going to two divisions next year. With Fort Atkinson, it keeps us in Division 1. Without Fort Atkinson, I believe, and this is, again, when I put the numbers together, could be in Division 2. That's only for tournament. And so, sometimes people get a little bit too concerned about what might be one game of the whole season, you know, the first tournament game or so. But we've got 24 other opportunities to make a great experience throughout the season. So, just I want to make sure everybody understands, for our division placement only affects us in tournaments. And in gymnastics, they're doing lots of things in gymnastics as well about, because pull-ups are so big. That's how they're going to place teams in pull-ups or in divisions as well. So, right now, we've only had one student this year in hockey from Fort Atkinson. And I'm going to request and suggest, recommend that we continue this at least for one more year. These are both just one-year agreements. I don't want to necessarily pull this out from this young man at this point. He knows that it could happen at any time. And he may decide yet before April 1 to even pull out himself, in which case, we would not be cooperating with Fort Atkinson. But right now, I recommend we continue that. I don't think the one extra or the division thing makes a difference this year. But I think next year, or the next year after that, two years down the road, we're going to be pretty good in hockey. And then, I think at that point, we might be able to make a little noise in the playoffs. So, I would recommend that you please consider that for adoption or approval. In gymnastics, we have four Edgerton girls. And in Fort Atkin, just so you know, the Fort Atkinson student pays the same $600 hockey fee as every other kid on the team. The agreement with Edgerton is that they pay $500 per athlete. We have four of them this year, so we have a $500 check, you know. And just to remind you that we had the exact same season, you know. We didn't have any extra muscle cost or extra cost that we needed. We did have an extra coaching cost this year, but that was because of the Trinity League versus the Division girls from Edgerton. Our coaches, understanding, they said, Christine Bernsor said, I can't imagine not having those girls as part of our team. They were just assimilated so well into our team. So, and one thing that the A.D.'s from Edgerton said, I think you might be immersed in, today's world is that the Edgerton girls came back after the first week of gymnastic practice and told him, they don't even hate us. So, and we don't. We're great kids. All kids are. We're kids. We all got along. We had a very, we had a very nice, nice year, great experience for all of our kids. And I know the concern was, no kids lose opportunity, and they didn't. We had as many kids better as we ever had. So, kids had a great experience still this year with Edgerton. So, I would recommend too that we do another one year, again with Edgerton Gymnastics, and then see what an extra will bring after that.
Brian, how many kids do we have in gymnastics?
I think we had 23.
And how many kids, how many kids can you put in an event?
So, you can have, you'll have five kids in each event, each apparatus. You know, like the floor, the bars, the beam, the ball. So, you could have 20 kids on that doing that, and then you could have a G. Obviously, there are some girls that are super talented, that are the all-around, who might be going on Fort Atkinson. There'll be a couple of those.
But there was always a girl in every, some event, right?
Yeah. We covered everything, you know. We even, this year, for extra kids, make sure everybody had it. We always made sure that we could do a J.B. B. or exhibition. So, every kid got to participate and get judged.
Yeah. I think that's the most important part.
Right. Yeah. We don't want to have kids that aren't able to compete and practice on. And sometimes, it's a safety thing, though. We want to make sure they're ready to do it safely. But our coaches do a great job of that.
Any other questions for Mr. Hamel? Can we do this in one motion? Kim?
Yeah.
I entertain a motion to recommend to continue the co-op programs as presented.
I'll move to approve the co-op recommendation for Boys Hockey and Girls Gymnastics as outlined by Mr. Hamel.
Second.
Okay. No, 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 no. I entertain the motion. Okay. We have a motion by Joe and seconded by Karen to accept the co-op programs as presented by Mr. Hamel. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Hearing none, so move. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Have you assigned this, right?
What did you say about Don Verwing taking time? You take it back. Moving on, discussion of possible action on educational outcomes.
All right, you see in your packet, there's a list of the educational options that are available through any school district of Milton students. And you see the most recent report card that are available this 17-18 school year, and what it does is it outlines what are the educational options, say, the public and private school options, virtual schools, full-time open enrollment. What has been added this year is the part-time open enrollment, the early college credit program, and the Start College Now. The home-based private education has already been a part of this as well. So those three that I mentioned are added for this year, and again, it says the 2017, and that's when it was added in the legislation, that's why it looks like it's a year behind, but it's really, that's when it was included in legislation, and of course, our most recent report card. And so, in essence, the, we met the requirement for posting these to, to the families in the community, and this is more of an informational piece, so these are the educational options that are available to, and you do need to officially vote on it, to accept it, there's really nothing we can do much about it, but it's something that we need to go through.
Okay, any questions? At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the educational outcomes.
To make a motion to approve the school district of Milton's educational options as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Karen, a second by Mike, to accept the educational, as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, so move. Thank you. Next item is makeup for inclement weather cancellations.
All right, so, as you know, we've had a few other incidents in this last month-plus, and so, we do need to, the first time in a long, long time, to look at adjusting the schedule to make up for instructional minutes. And so, in your packet, you see a memo that outlines our plan to recoup some of the lost time and also prepare ourselves, just in case we have any more weather circumstances that impact school. So, what we're looking at is a few makeup days. The first one is Monday, March 11th, which is now a regular school day. It was a PD day, but it is now a regular school day for K-12 students. There will not be 4K on that day. The second makeup day is Friday, April 19th, which is now a regular school day for all students, 4K through 12th, that is Good Friday. Of course, if there are students missing for religious purposes, they'll be exempt from, from school that day. The Thursday, June 6th, which was a half-day, is now a full school day for all 4K and 12th through 12th grade students. And then our last day of school will be a half-day, which is Friday, June 7th, for K-12. There'll be no 4K on that day. Also, because of the minutes of instruction is really the standard that we are now under, it used to be minutes of instruction and 180 school days, now it's just minutes of instruction. We are looking to beef up the number of minutes in our 7-12 schedule, so we will add eight minutes to every day for our 7-12 students, beginning next Monday, March 4th, and their school day will begin the, you see right there, the start time for Milton High School, 7:30 to 2:58, and for Milton Middle School, 7:25 to 2:53. So we're adding five minutes to the beginning of the day, and three minutes to the end, and the shorter number at the end of the day is to try to minimize any impact for the bus routes for our K-6 friends. So, that will give us more than a day plus of potential future snow or weather occurrences, and again, as a way to attempt to try to recoup some of the days, especially the March and April day, early as possible for instructional improvement, so. Any questions on the plan for the hours and minutes? I did reach out to our clergy council regarding Good Friday, a few weeks back, to make sure that they were understanding, and very much so, they are. This is a rare occurrence, this is not to be precedent-setting. This is very atypical for us to have this many inclement weather days, and so, we did reach out to, to them prior to this as well.
I know DPI has, up to this point at least, not chosen to use the exemption for bad weather, is there a possibility that that could still happen, or not?
We received a word from DPI that school districts are on their own to figure it out, and so, this is what we're doing, is we're figuring it out. So there's, even with the state emergencies and the cancellation of the US Postal Service, all that stuff, none of those days will be cleared or waived by DPI.
Okay. Any other questions about the makeup dates? Thank you. Moving on, action on the 2018-19 open enrollment alternative applications. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, we have two in and zero out?
Actually, I did update it earlier, there is one out.
Okay.
I updated it this afternoon.
So we have two in and one out?
Two in and one out.
I would entertain a motion to accept that report?
I'll make a motion to accept that report.
Second.
Motion made by Don, second by Diamond, to accept the report as presented. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so move. The next item is action on our staffing report. We receive that in our packets.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing report as presented.
I'll second it.
Quick discussion? We have a, we have a motion and a second discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, just to let everybody know that I saw on here that there is a contract up for renewal, and so, because I haven't been able to review that contract, I'll be voting no, just given with what everything's going on right now.
Would you like clarification on that piece, or?
No.
I think it'd be appropriate to, to give an explanation on that.
Sure, actually, I have Chris Tuckendorf, our director of HR, who can explain that update.
Okay, on February 19th, excuse me, I emailed Tom, Diamond, and Mike as members of the HR committee, and within HR, we, personally, do a number of audits at any given time, double-checking contracts, along with calendars. And on this issue with Erin Conhouse's 2018-19 current supervisory contract, there were six days of holiday payments, and so, we updated the contract, and then put on the staffing report, and we have notified...
Can you explain who Erin Conhouse is?
Yes, I'm sorry, she is the district nurse, the school district. And we have let payroll know, but we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of this, and of the oversight.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Chris. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the staffing item as reported. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carried. Action on gifts and donations, and we have $300 for this month.
I make a motion to accept this with gratitude?
Second.
Motion made by Mike. And I'm gonna hit the reset button, which I say every meeting. Our community is very generous and very supportive of the programs that we have throughout the district, so they all are greatly appreciated. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, so move. Thank you again to the community and individuals. Meeting dates, upcoming board and committee meetings.
All right, tomorrow, referendum community open house, 6 o'clock to 7 at Harmony Elementary. We have, this coming Thursday is the board, the school board candidate forum, and I believe that's at the city chambers, and that's at 5:00 PM. HR committee meeting is scheduled for this Friday, and we're, I believe, looking at noon for that. Next Monday is the benefits advisory group at 4:30 at district office. And we're looking at a finance committee meeting next Tuesday, March 5th, at noon at district office. And then, our next, we're looking at, let's see. Yep. We have, March 11th is our HR with the administration meeting at 5:30, and then we have our regular scheduled board meeting at 6:30, and both of those meetings will be here at the high school.
Okay.
We'll go ahead with the finance committee on the seventh assignment, so that's a good two.
Or seven?
On the fifth. Tuesday the 5th, correct.
Tuesday the 5th, noon, so. Yep, so we're all set.
Okay. Any other information on meeting dates? Okay, at that point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
A second.
Motion second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Thank you, everyone, for coming.